Thanks for joining us for City Council Comments. I'm Steve Erickson along with Councilmember Brad Johnson. Today, we're talking about our Wednesday, February 2nd and the Tuesday, February 15th, City Council meetings. Thanks for coming in today.
Great to be here, Steve. I feel like I'm here with the voice of Coon Rapids.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. We are coming off of Snowflake Day. Speaking of that, we had a big community celebration here just a couple of weeks ago. We had a parade. I know you said you made it out to the Pancake Breakfast?
I was at the Pancake Breakfast. It was great. It was at the VFW, but the parade went well, at least the first one that we had. But we had one that got canceled because of the weather. But that's the way it goes. I guess the medallion was found and the community really came together for it. So, we thank all of our community partners that helped us put that together and it was a great event as usual.
Yeah, and we have that every year and the parade, like you said, they were canceled actually the first week due to weather, rescheduled for the next Tuesday and Thursday.
We had one really good day.
Yeah, the Tuesday was really nice. We were out there. I know we did some live hits on the city Facebook page showing folks that had come out and they did donate food to the ACBC Food Shelf, so they were able to collect donations out of that parade.
Yep. It's a wonderful annual event and for those people who've just moved into Coon Rapids, pay attention to it because every end of January, beginning of February, it's when the community really comes together in the winter.
It does. All right, well, let's jump into things here. We're going to start off talking about the Tuesday, February 15th Council Meeting, one of the first items we wanted to talk about. There was sort of a surprise presentation. I mean, it was an agenda item, but it was a surprise for the person who received this award from the Coon Creek Watershed District.
I think it was actually a surprise to some of the council members too, because I think we were expecting the Coon Creek, some of us were expecting the Coon Creek Watershed District to come in and say, hey, here's what's going on for us this year. And instead, it turned out into a really nice award that they decided to give to Mark Hanson, who is just a pivotal employee for us in Public Works and helps us with all of our street reconstruction and many other things. And Mark is a real asset to the city and it's not a surprise that he was recognized by the Coon Creek Watershed District. So, that was really nice.
Yeah, and this is the inaugural year they've given out this sort of friend of the watershed district. I forget the exact wording of it, but he got a pen and pencil set that was in, the case was engraved and congratulations to him. He's very patient and a very good guy to work with.
Wonderful to work with and I would also say the Coon Creek Watershed District has been a great partner for the city. I used to serve on the Coon Creek Watershed District. I did about four years in a couple of terms appointed by the county board for that and frankly, it's a great organization to help work on water quality and some of our water resource issues that we have. And right now, the city is considering nominations to the county board for representatives on the Board of Managers for the Coon Creek Watershed District. So, if anybody in the community is interested in serving on the Coon Creek Watershed District, they should look at the city website and make an application to be nominated to that through the City Council and then it goes to the county board as well.
All right, so they're the ones that ultimately make the decision is the county board?
Yeah, the way it works is that the city would nominate three or more potential candidates to the Coon Creek Watershed District. We nominate them to the county board. The county board then meets and considers all of the applicants from the various cities and then they actually make the appointment.
All right. Council heard a presentation from the Crooked Lake Area Association. They come in annually and kind of give us an update on what's going on at Crooked Lake.
Yeah, and Crooked Lake is a pivotal part of our water resources here in Anoka County. It's part of the Coon Creek Watershed District that we just mentioned. I feel particularly attached to Crooked Lake because I grew up in Anoka and for, I can, I think safely say for over 35 years, I've been either water skiing or fishing or paddle boarding on Crooked Lake. And we have a wonderful city park on Crooked Lake and it has become this amazing community that pulls people together. You all did a feature on a big...
Ice Carousel.
Yeah, an ice carousel that's out there and we have the Polar Plunge that's out there and a whole bunch of other things. So, it's a really neat water resource for people who haven't yet gone out to check it out, but also that that association does a really good job taking care of the lake.
Yeah, and they kind of monitor the health of the lake. I know invasive species was a concern at one point. I don't know if that's an issue.
Not as much anymore because they've paid so much attention to it. They've gotten grants to deal with the milfoil issue that was there and the water quality there is as best as I've ever seen it in 35 years.
All right, that's great. And you kind of mentioned it, but the Polar Plunge is coming up here in just over a week, Saturday, February 26th at noon. Crooked Lake, some brave souls are going to be jumping in for Special Olympics Minnesota.
I always get worried about going out there for that because I'm afraid somebody's going to want to push a city council member into the water.
You haven't gone in yet?
Not yet.
This might be your year. So anyways, plungemn.org is the website if you want to sign up to jump or if you just want to donate. I know our police department has a team that is trying to raise money for that, so a very good cause there with Special Olympics Minnesota.
Agreed.
All right. Moving forward, council held a public hearing, assessment hearing, and ordered projects related to street reconstruction for this year. This started early, I think we did a story on this, when you were doing preliminary work back last August for this year's construction, but more pieces of the puzzle are coming together here for this year's street reconstruction program.
That's right. And frankly, we're doing less this year than we have in recent years because we've been very aggressive in the city of Coon Rapids at our street reconstruction because candidly, we have a large city that has some older infrastructure and we wanted to make sure that it was current so it was safe and comfortable for people to drive on and it does reflect in people's property values as well. We do get input from the community, some favoring improvements, some opposing them. Often, we hear from people who have difficult financial circumstances and they're worried about the tax impact on them or the special assessment impact on them. And the thing that we try to help them understand is that Coon Rapids listens to them and takes that very seriously and that's why we have one of the lower special assessments of any surrounding community. And also, there's an ability for people to pay off special assessments at an extremely low interest rate of a little over two, a little less than two and a half percent over a 10-year period of time. So, we understand that it's a financial imposition on people, but it really is an important thing for us to stay current for the health, safety, and well-being of our community.
All right, and the assessment this year looks like it's just over $2,200 per property.
For residential homes, full-blown residential homes.
Okay, so that's the amount. And like you said, there's a plan if people can pay it in full, no interest, or they can roll it to their taxes with an interest.
Very modest interest rate. In fact, when they did street reconstruction and improvements in my neighborhood, I elected to do the 10-year plan, just because it made sense and it was easy for me to put on that bill. And then I had the benefit of the balance right now.
Okay, so we're talking closer to 200, I don't know what the number of that is, 200 some dollars a year.
That's right.
For 10 years.
Right.
Okay, so again, street reconstruction, there's 50-some segments of streets that are being reconstructed this year. Obviously, we can't list them all, but you can find those on the city's website if you go under the agendas and if you want to see every roadway. Residents that are impacted have already been notified. Some of them attended the assessment hearing. And now, construction will begin, it sounds like around May usually going into October.
That's right. And the person we mentioned earlier, Mark Hanson, is really the point person for the city and the people that are impacted by the street reconstruction. He's very good to work with. He's very professional about working with communities on it. And so, if anybody has any particular request or need or question about the project, call into City Hall, ask to speak to Mark Hanson and he will try to help you out as best as he can and he does a really good job at that.
Yeah, and a lot of information on the website as well. I think there's even a map kind of showing what might be the next areas that may need to be reconstructed in the coming years. So, if you're wondering, where is my street? You know, where is it on the timetable? You might be able to find some information online as well.
Exactly.
All right, council considered award of contracts for Fire Station 3, but turns out, we didn't actually wind up awarding any contracts at this week's meeting.
Right, sometimes when you put things out for bid, you don't get any bids in and then the city staff will look at it and see if you really have to bid it or if they have the discretion to get some estimates, just market estimates from that. And there is some ability to do that. And then, and then one of the things that happens from time to time is you put it out for bid, but you, when you get bids in, you might get some people that are in the lower end of the bidding range, but you don't have all the documentation you need from them. And so, you have additional questions. And it's better for us as stewards of the public dollar to slow the process down a little bit, make sure we get the input if we need to put it out for additional bids. And so, I'm confident that by the time we get to our next meetings in March, we will get everything together and we'll have a kind of a final number and some recommendations from city staff on what bids came in low and how much the city new fire station is going to cost.
Yeah, in this day and age, you don't know with some of the market conditions right now with materials and supplies.
That's exactly right. You know, and so, we'll see how it comes in. It's an ambitious project, but it's an important piece of infrastructure and it's going to be a good investment for the city in the long run.
All right, and we're talking about a new Fire Station 3, sort of right across from Anoka Ramsey Community College on the old Cook Ice Arena site.
That's exactly right.
All right. More to come on that in March as you mentioned. Moving forward, council adopted an ordinance rezoning property. This is for Vista Outdoor at 3745 Main Street. This is the old, what property is this?
Well, this is the Federal Cartridge.
Not the old, the Federal Cartridge property.
Yeah, this is the Federal Cartridge property and some people who've been in Anoka County for a long time might know it as that kind of piece of land that has the little sheds out on it and a herd of deer as well. But right now, Vista, which owns and has purchased Federal Cartridge, has a really ambitious project in play where they want to build a warehouse there. That property had been designated by the city some years ago as an overlay district for commercial development. And there would have been the ability at one point in time to build out the commercial side of things, but a warehouse is a more industrial use. And so, the city council is having to make a determination as to whether to rezone kind of back to an industrial use so that any warehouse can be built there or to determine whether to keep the overlay district in the area and maybe have a little bit more voice in how things are ultimately developed there. And I think there's some council members that have some questions on it and it's important when that happens to kind of slow the process down. It's not a negative thing for Vista at all because we think Federal Cartridge is just a wonderful asset in the community, but it's important for us to make sure that all the council members have a voice in the process and then we can communicate our view and our vision for the city to Vista and get some feedback from them. But I'm confident that we're going to get to a yes on this project.
All right. Moving forward, council considered accepting plans and specifications. This is for miscellaneous city parking lot and trail reconstruction. There's going to be several areas of the city that get some new trail connections this summer.
So, I've been on the council now for seven years. It has been an important, I remember in the first year I was there, there was a question about what is our vision for the parks and trails in Coon Rapids? And part of the vision was connecting up and maintaining, you know, our existing trails. And that's what this really does. This is just part of accomplishing the mission of making sure we have connected up trails and also well-maintained trails. And so, it's just a good investment in the city and it's a thing that a lot of people who come from outside of Coon Rapids and move here comment on to us, which is how fantastic our trail system is and it's important for us to keep that up.
All right. I sort of think of the, well, trails, obviously where the sidewalk ends, that book kind of the...
That's right.
We want to connect up some of these and fill in some of these different areas we're talking about. For this year, Aspen Park Trail Reconstruction, Cardinal Woods Park, Wildwood Park, and then there is also a trail extension at the Bunker Hills Dog Park. And then, along with this, there's also some tennis court replacement. This is at Kennedy Park. And there's also basketball court replacement at both Epiphany Park and Mercy Park. Quite a few things that'll be going on this summer related to the park and trail system.
Should be good.
All right. Moving forward, council considered a resolution approving plans and specifications and ordered the ad for bids. This is for our annual street maintenance program. I feel like we talk about this a lot because we talk about it annually, but we're the lead agency on this group.
It's a consortium of a bunch of cities and what it is, is just us being smart and stewards of the public dollar and we get together and we use economies of scale to get good prices on things. And so, we do it every year and Coon Rapids takes the lead on it because we take the lead on a lot of things and we find that benefits our citizens because we get good prices for things and we get good quality for our money.
All right, so you said quite a few cities, more than a dozen now. I feel like we keep adding to that list every year and this is for things like pavement markings, crack sealing, and fog ceilings for streets and trails.
That's right.
All right, fun stuff. Moving forward, council considered a settlement agreement with North Star Improvements and vacated a public roadway easement for this.
Yeah, so this is the area, there's a wetland that's north of Rapid Honda, Rapids Honda, and that's going to be developed. And part of the, you know, the give and take on the development, because we're going to be putting in four lots there, so that's four new residential lots where homes will be built and be added to the tax rolls here in Coon Rapids, is to connect up part of our trail system. We just talked about trails, but this will be part of the future trail system that will go from Lyons Coon Creek Park and kind of wrap around the public ditch system that's there, but also the wetland area that overlooks the Eagle's Nest that many people know about and things like that. And in order to do that, the city staff got together with North Star Improvements LLC and they're vacating this public roadway easement. They're cleaning things up and we're getting the benefit of a trail easement in there that'll make it a nice trail connection through there when we're ultimately able to put that together. And we hope it's not going to be too far off in the future.
Yeah, all right, sounds good. Moving forward, council considered authorizing a memorandum of understanding. This is for a beekeeping pilot program. This is pretty interesting.
So, for years, going back to the point time about seven years ago when I came on the council, people have been talking about, when are we going to be allowed to have bees in the city? And we do have, through our Sustainability Commission, recommendations about increasing our pollinators in the community. And finally, we've gotten to the point of having a beekeeping pilot program to see how it's going to work out. And we're going to hire some professional beekeepers to advise us on that and we'll get some best practices out of that and we'll come up with ultimately what it might look like for citizens. I wouldn't say that there's a lot of citizens that are interested in it, but the few that are are very passionate about it and they're very committed to it and the city thinks it's a good direction to go to.
Yeah, and the two that were selected for this program are actually longtime, or they're residents, they're longtime beekeepers. And they're going to start off with these hives at the community gardens off of 121st Avenue by Fire Station 2 and the West Water Treatment Plant.
That's right.
Okay, and so, then they'll take all that data. And then, this is also on public city-owned property because then this will allow them to sort of maintain oversight and then kind of look at what the future of this program might be.
That's right.
Okay, so they'll take all that data this year and come back and have another discussion.
We'll see where it goes, yeah.
You've been talking bees now for two years, I think, is what I read. So, it's kind of nice to see it happening. All right, council considered a settlement agreement, reasonable accommodation with Maraki Recovery.
Yeah, people might remember the discussion that the council had, you know, some time ago about a sober house. And there was a request for reasonable accommodation to allow, I believe it was up to 10 people in a sober house, which is a residential house in a residential neighborhood. And the city at the time was concerned about that, the number of people and the information as to why 10 people would be requested as a part of that reasonable accommodation. And the city denied the request for 10 people in that sober house. There was some litigation in federal court over that where there was a difference of opinion between the city and Maraki and the city prevailed in that litigation. And I'll let that district court order speak for itself. But in the final analysis, what came of this was the city staff and the city attorney's office got together with the attorneys for Maraki and they worked out a settlement agreement. And the settlement agreement allows for one additional person as a residential manager to be in the sober house. And when I say one additional, that's one additional over, I believe it's six that were allowed in that sober house. And it also creates an understanding about how that'll be handled by the parties. And I think the city benefited from really good legal advice. I talked about this a little bit at the city council meeting, but really good legal advice from both our city attorney and Kennedy and Graven, our outside advisors, but also we appreciate Maraki and being a partner in those settlement negotiations as well. So, we look forward to that issue being over, but having a better, clearer understanding of things. And I think the city council really was exemplary in how it handled the situation. I know there are other city councils in different parts of the state that have not prevailed in their litigation, but I think people can be proud of the way the city council handled this matter.
All right. On that note, that is the end of what we wanted to talk about on February 15th. We'll jump back now to our first meeting of the month, which was actually on Wednesday instead of Tuesday because of caucuses that night.
That's right.
We're obviously in an election year, so hopefully some folks were able to take part of that or at least voice their opinions to their parties. One of the first items we wanted to talk about here was a resolution authorizing a cooperative agreement with the Minnesota Department of Public Safety. This was relating to a victim services grant.
Right, so, I mean, you know this, Steve, and I think some other people in Coon Rapids know this. I'm a prosecutor by day and child protection lawyer and I deal a lot with people in the criminal justice system and also with child victims of various crimes, whether it be physical abuse or sexual abuse. One of the wonderful things that Minnesota does is it allows for cities to make an application through the Minnesota Department of Public Safety for a victim advocate or victim services grant, which allows us to fund having our own victim advocate. So, we have the ability here in Coon Rapids to use state money to pay for a victim advocate for people who are victims of crime in Coon Rapids. And that's about, I believe, $70,000 a year for a two-year term of the grant. We use that victim advocate every week in court to communicate with victims and to help those victims communicate with our prosecutors and people in the criminal justice system. And it's just, it's a necessary thing, but it's really helpful to have the state dollars to do that.
Yeah, wherever you can get that money and provide these services is great. And this was an extension, right, that we've had this two other, two other two-year grants, it seems like.
That's right.
This started in 2017.
That's right.
Okay.
So, we're hoping to continue it in the future and at least we've got it for another two more years and it's been a great asset to us here in Coon Rapids.
All right. Moving forward, council considered a site plan, actually approved the site plan for a Mercy Hospital Ambulance Bay addition. I know you had the fortunate or unfortunate thing of actually going through the ambulance bay at one point, right?
Yeah, I've been wheeled into Mercy through the old, you know, colder, narrower ambulance bay after a little bit of an accident. And so, this, you know, Mercy is continuing to expand. It's a wonderful hospital system. It's a great asset in the community and we serve a really huge area. I mean, that runs, you know, way up into the northern parts of Anoka County and way out west and, you know, all the way through Coon Rapids. And so, they get a lot of activity in their emergency room and frankly, winters are cold. And so, it's nice to have them continuing to invest in that property and to expand the services that they provide and to make it more comfortable for people who are in dire need of their help. So, it's a great, it's a great improvement to, you know, Mercy Hospital.
Yeah, and we're talking about, I think they're going from two bays to six bays, correct?
Right.
All right, hopefully you don't have a need to go through there, but when you do, you're glad that it's there.
That's right.
All right. Moving forward, council approved use flexibility. This is for a hybrid warehouse self-storage facility at the U-Haul site. Folks are familiar with that and this is actually going to be on the old Pedersen Floral site, correct?
Right, on Coon Rapids Boulevard. So, people know probably where the U-Haul facility is currently, right next door to that was Pedersen Floral. There have been various projects that have come forward to the city over the years. U-Haul said, you know what, we have a vision for that site, but we want to do something a little bit different. We have a little bit of a different business model for how to do self-storage in these kind of pods or container systems. And that required us to think creatively and work with U-Haul and we slowed things down a little bit, but ultimately, just as we hope to do with Vista and their project, we got to a yes on this one. And so, U-Haul will be redeveloping the Pedersen Floral site, which has, you know, gone into disrepair over the years and that'll be a big improvement. And we had wonderful input from the neighbors in the community who are virtually entirely supportive of U-Haul expanding in this direction. So, that'll be a good asset to the city as well.
All right. Council considered an approved design flexibility. This is for a new Dollar General that's coming to 105th and Hanson Boulevard.
Right. So, we, as a city council, try to make sure that especially properties that front on the major thoroughfares or corridors in the community look attractive so that it's an attractive place to live, work, eat, sleep, and play, right? And so, sometimes a business comes to us and asks for flexibility because, you know, they're in a unique situation. Here, they ask for flexibility to have less actual glass windows, but to have panels that look like windows. And I think the city council was in agreement that that was an appropriate request under the circumstances.
All right. Council adopted a resolution. This is related to insurance renewals. The big part we wanted to talk about was this sewer, no-fault sewer backup coverage that the city has renewed for another year. It's a small amount, but we're asking people to check their homeowner policies, correct, to see what coverage they have.
Yep, everybody out there, check your homeowner's policies. Make sure you have some coverage if a sewer backs up. The city is going to provide some assistance in that area. I think it's up to $10,000, but sometimes these things cost more than that. So, take a look at your insurance policies, see that you've got the coverage if you can and know that we're going to try to help you out if something catastrophic happens, but sometimes the city can't pay the whole bill.
Yeah, and it's basically no-fault insurance.
Right.
It's up to $10,000, so the lesson is we've had people that have seen bills up to $50,000 for some of these cleanups. So, unfortunately, it can and does happen, but you want to have that coverage if it does happen.
A lot of surrounding communities don't provide any assistance, so we think we're doing a good thing by providing some, but please take a look at your insurance policy and make sure, which reminds me, I have to look at mine too. Make sure that you've got the coverage that you think you need.
Yeah, I know mine was included at one point and then they started moving it, you know, because they shift things at renewals and...
Got to check it every year.
So, always good to check it and then it's relatively cheap for additional coverage, so check that out. All right, before we go, and on kind of a sad note, we want to pass along that former mayor Bob Lewis passed away. That was brought up at that meeting. He was the mayor from 1982 to 1989 and he was 92 years old. And you just shared some news that a longtime county commissioner also recently died.
Right, so I appreciate Pat Carlson bringing up former mayor Bob Lewis and his service to the community and that was a wonderful. And recently too, Al Cordiak passed away and many people here in Anoka County might remember Commissioner Cordiak as the chair of the county board for a very, very long time, kind of an institution at Anoka County and widely considered to be the father of the Anoka County Park System. And so, to Mr. Cordiak and the Cordiak family, we express our condolences and appreciation for his service and also the service of his son, James Cordiak, on the county board. But that was a loss to the community, but such a wonderful benefit that we gained from them and their service over the years.
Yeah, the beautiful parks that can live to the legacy there.
That's right.
All right, and you had a letter that you also wanted to share quickly before we go.
Yeah, we get all kinds of, we get all kinds of letters as city council members, some good, some bad.
I bet you do.
Some good, some bad, some indifferent. But we got a letter recently from one of my constituents that I shared with the city council. And I think it touched a chord with me, not just because it was a very polite letter, but also because it said something about the culture of the Coon Rapids City Council. So, I'll just read you this. I'm not going to say who the person was because I haven't asked him for permission, but the contents of the letter is, "Hi Brad, we bought a town home in Weston Woods about one year ago. I was the editor of three newspapers over the years and attended many city council meetings across Minnesota." This is where it gets a little funny. "Almost all were like attending a criminal court parole hearing. No council members ever smiled. Now, moving to Coon Rapids and watching the city council meetings on television, seeing council members smile and laugh, it's like a family gathering rather than a stern government meeting. Because of the family-type atmosphere, more things get done and why Coon Rapids is as important and successful as ever and only getting better. I just love living here. Now, I'll disclose to you, that was not from one of my family members."
You said, was that your mom or dad?
It's not my mom or dad, but it was somebody who had moved into the city and was noticing something that I think is really important about the culture of Coon Rapids. Rapids and the city council. We all respect each other's different temperaments, talents, strengths, life experiences, and convictions. We all benefit from them. And we all look at each other as friends and neighbors and, and kin, if you will. And we all are better in public service and, and in the service that we're able to provide the community if we listen and we're able to have a little bit of humor and humility in the process, just like if you're dealing with your family. You might not always agree, but you can agree that it's good to talk things through and good to respect each other's views. So I just wanted to share that. It was nice. But we do look at each other a lot like family.
Yeah. Always great to get those notes. Not everybody takes the time to write out, you know, we're quick to write out the bad things, but it's great to get those occasionally. And I think that's a great note to end on today. All right.
Very good.
We're out of time. So I appreciate you coming in here.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we'll see you again.
My pleasure.
All right. Thanks, Brad. Thank you at home for watching. We'll see you back here after our two meetings in March.